It is 7:03 PM and I will call the zoning board of appeals meeting to order on Wednesday, November 15. I'm Sarah Melish, the chair. Have with me Rob Scott, Catherine Howe, John Benares, Jim Dietrich, and Brian Solace. And soon Philbrook is sitting in from the planning board. Brian will be recusing himself from the first application. So the five of us others will be voting. Just to, as a start for this meeting, in case anybody is here for the application of Joseph Balzone regarding Harbor Street, 73-75 Harbor Street, I wanted to announce that we will not be hearing that application tonight because it was mistakenly posted for 73 Harbor Street rather than 75. So we will be reposting that for our December meeting with the correct address and sending a better notices again. Okay, thanks. So the first application tonight is the application for Old Quarry LLC, AKA Cell Signaling Technology. I will open the public hearing for the application of Old Quarry LLC for a variance under sections 5.5 and 12.3.3 of the zoning bylaw and/or other relief as may be necessary to allow an eight-foot increase in the height for the building from 55 feet to 63 feet, a four-foot increase in the height for mechanical appurtenances from 15 feet to 19 feet, and an 11-foot increase in the height of the vent pipes from 15 feet to 26 feet at the site located off Old Atwater Avenue assessor's map, 37 lots 7 and 8 in the Limited Commercial District filed with the town clerk on October 16, 2023. Am I correct? There's two lots?
Yes.
Okay, good. It wasn't on the application, so we have to look it up.
All right, there's a lot that is contained within the large lot that has merged, but the assessors are still carrying it.
Okay. So who will be presenting this application?
I will be one of the presenters. My name is Mark Glofsky. I'm a lawyer with offices at 8 Washington Street in Beverly. And as you heard, I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Old Quarry LLC. The end user, as you all know, will be cell signaling technology, hopefully. Most of you, all of you, most of you attended the site visit on Saturday, and so you're familiar with the property. It's 40 acres, bounded by 128. Convenes property and property of trustees or reservations. It's a site that has had a history as a stone quarry for decades. It was carved out. The property is now the remnants of the old quarry. It is about 2,500 feet deep from Atwater Avenue to the trustees' property on the north. It has a change of elevation from 146 to 50 at Atwater Avenue, so there's a 96-foot drop from the highest portion of property to the lowest portion. At the site that you saw, which is the proposed site of the building, the cliff remains, which is the highest point. It is going to be contained within the building's footprint, hopefully. And that is at an elevation of 122. It drops to 44, so it drops to 78. So there's a 40-foot change in elevation from the top of that cliff that you saw on Saturday to the base. That is the location of the proposed building, and it's the location of the proposed building for several reasons. One, early on in our discussions with the planning board, we were informed essentially that the town would prefer to see less of the building from 128. We were also encouraged to develop the disturbed portions of the property and try to leave unscathed the undisturbed portions of the property and in fact enhance them. So that is precisely what cell signaling is proposing to do. And that is, in fact, the reason why we're here tonight because in order to accomplish that, we need to set the building in a location which, as you'll hear, because of the height definition in the zoning bylaw, will necessitate the variances that we're requesting. Notwithstanding the fact that looking at the proposed building from 128, you'll essentially see a two-story building. But on the rear carved-out portion of the property facing Tim Brady, there will be multiple stories. So that section of the building won't be exposed to anything other than the Brady property essentially. And it is an extremely challenging site. And Samir Sroji, who's here tonight from HGA with Mark Allen, will explain how they have designed a building that does a terrific job in providing what cell signaling needs and at the same time responding to the issues that were raised by the planning board. But before we get to the description of the building and the precise reasons why the variances are needed for building height, I thought it would be appropriate for Matt Connors from Hancock Associates to explain the situation with respect to the topography in better terms than I could. Matt, you could do that.
Stuff to look at.
Oh, good.
I believe you all have this. I've just loaded up something. Stand right here so I can kind of get everybody. This is good. So when you look at the property, we have this dense run through here of lines. This is basically the cliff face. So up here, this is.
Can you just move it around slightly so that we can see?
Yeah, so that some of the people can see.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that would be awesome.
Okay.
Sorry.
No problem. So outlined in, so outlined in blue is the building that we're performing. 128 is down here at the bottom by my hand, and the storage facility is up on this current. What's outlined in blue is Phase 1, Phase 2, and this is our parking garage. So as you look at where the footprint is, we have a low spot based upon existing topography of 73 and change over here in the Phase 2. And the highest spot based on the building and topography is over here at 124. So as you go from the lowest side up to cliff face to the high side, it's quite a bit of change. Over here at the parking garage, it's not so much of a change because we're in that, mostly in the lower area. But we have a low over here of 82 and our high is somewhere around here like 86. Yes, sorry, 88, sorry, earlier. So you see the topography changes that we're dealing with as we cite this building. To get a better understanding, we took a section through Phase 1 and to show you how, basically, here's the start of Phase 1 over here. Come across, we have a cliff face that we're coming up. And then come over here, and this is about the end of Phase 2. Sorry, Phase 1. So up here, as Mark was saying, we have two stories. And down here, where we're hiding a lot of elevation, we have the multiple stories. Any questions on topography?
Matt's not going anywhere. So if we need to get back to topography, you can do that.
Absolutely.
Also here, by the way, from cell signaling, are Peter Muto and Craig Thompson, as well as Peter Cordoe. And if there are any questions that are related to cell signaling in particular, they're the ones that should be able to respond, hopefully. But with that, I think Samir is now going to explain how he designed the building.
And if I may get permission to share, maybe I can share the images so that everybody can. So this is the same package that you have in your hands.
Do you have another printout in your house that I can turn out?
Oh, yes.
Okay, I thought there was a major change, never mind. Sorry.
I know. Okay, so it's up. People can turn their chairs around if they so wish. We won't be offended. And could you just state your name again and be a part?
My name is Samir Sroji. I'm with HGA in Washington and the hiring principal for the project at Cell Signaling. One more step here. All right, so this is the image, an aerial image of the site with the Mangatag Athletic Park on the right, the storage facility, the Brady property, as we call it. And you see in the middle the cliff that we talked about that remains from the quarry activity on the site. From the beginning, we opted to straddle the cliff because the area within the center of the property is the disturbed area, disturbed through the quarrying activity. We're developing only eight acres of the 48-acre facility. The rest of it is really forest. And cell signaling's charge for us is to really restore the old quarry on the scarred site. And we're doing that by placing the buildings in the worst disturbed areas of the site. And that's where the cliff is. And the cliff creates two levels for the campus. So cell signaling will be moving their whole campus. And by, to achieve the goal of connecting the lower level and the upper level, the building is straddling the cliff and creating kind of a cascading effect along it. Here's the plan that shows the footprint. So we're talking about Phase 1, both building and garage, and then Phase 2, blanking, creating a sort of a V shape, both of them straddling the cliff right here. And one of the other main charges that CSD and the town gave us is to minimize visual impact from 128. So that's always been a driver. And by sitting low in the site, we actually achieved that. So the garage in the initial master plan was going to be a paved surface parking. CSD decided to invest in a structured garage to minimize the amount of paved surfaces and connect the garage to the building directly. The decision to place the garage right where it is on the east side of the building was because it is, as Matt described, is the lowest point of the site. By doing that, we're keeping it away from, you know, minimizing its visibility from 128 and from the campus. When we did all of that to kind of stay low and minimize the impact, a bulk of the building perimeter, here's a rendering of Phase 1 alone, straddling the cliff. When we calculate the average grade that is defined by the perimeter of both the building and the garage, both phases, we're kind of penalized because we're trying to achieve kind of low visual impact by having, by being a lot of the perimeter of the building low in the side, the average grade is actually low. This is a visual with Phase 2 coming in with the same concept of straddling up against the cliff. This is a closer view of that. Closer view with the Phase 2 in place. And you see the garage on the far left. So the calculation of the average grade per the bylaws put it at elevation 97.6. And because this is a lab building, and a lab building benefits from having robust floor-to-floor height, we are at around 15 floor-to-floor, measuring to the top of the building actually exceeded the bylaw and the zoning allowance of 55, and that's why we're here, asking for relief on that. Here's a view, an aerial view of the approach, which would be the south side. This is the area that we're calling the Upper Meadow. And you can see the bridge that connects to the garage on the right. That's the main entrance of the building. We see the mechanical space up on top. And in this view, we were showing the stacks, the vents for mechanical venting of the building. Since then, the design has shifted. We tried to minimize the visual effect of those, and we have shifted them. And I think Mark, you sent information on that.
So the new plans, right?
Yeah. So this is sort of an elevation that indicates the average grade height and the requested building height that allows us to have the two floors on the Upper Meadow as stated with 15 floor-to-floor. And then the mechanical space height at 19 instead of 15. And in addition to that, seven feet for the height. There's an elevation that crosses, slices through the front of the building, entrance being right here and linked to the garage and the garage. And as you can see, the garage is sitting in the lowest point of the site intentionally. Any questions? Yeah.
I'm confused by the, I didn't vent pipes.
Are there vent pipes?
Yeah, originally it said additional 11 feet. Now it's only seven, is that?
No.
No.
It's still 11. The mechanicals are limited by the bylaw to 15 feet. The vent pipes are going to be 26 feet above the roof, the highest point of the roof. So they will be, if the mechanical could be 15 before, we're now going to exceed that 15 by 11 with the vent pipes. And we're going to exceed that 15 by four feet with the mechanicals. And I think Samir is going to explain that.
Yes. Questions?
Yeah, two questions.
Yeah.
Earlier, a number of people have said that the planning board asked you to minimize what would be seen from 128. I haven't seen any pictures of that yet. You may have one, and if you do, I'd like to see it at some point. Second question is, is there a standard that determines the height of vent pipes coming out of laboratories? And what is it based on and who establishes it and that sort of thing? Okay, good. Thank you.
We anticipated that question.
I'm glad you did.
So here's a view, sorry, go back. So this is actually a view of 128. Right here is, you're kind of standing at the highway, high level at 128, looking towards the side. And you can see the kind of position in the upper corner here. So basically, there is a height elevation between 128 and this Upper Meadow that we're talking about, and there's a lot of trees. What we did is actually study the trees in winter because we wanted to know how many are evergreens, how many shed their leaves, so that there's no visibility whatsoever. The image on the left right here, it shows a little bit of the building peeking through that canopy if we put all the building on the higher elevation. So this is just to say that the option of putting more of the building on the lower levels is to really eliminate that view. The second question, is that a good, what you're doing?
So what you're saying is we should be looking at the photograph on the right.
The photograph on the right represents what the design is right now, including the variance required, requested. Now, on the vent height, we actually go through a process of modeling, physical model, that is put in a wind tunnel to study what is the optimal height of the vents. And you want to be, there's a couple of things you're trying to achieve. You're trying to make it safe for people that go up on the roof of the mechanical space, for example, to clean the PV array or something. And you want that stack to extend beyond the height of the person there so that, you know, the air goes higher than that. And again, because CSD's goal is very ambitious on the sustainability piece of things and energy consumption, the height of the stack is also beneficial in lowering the fan speed that pushes air. So by having, requesting that height, we're kind of lowering the energy consumption, the greenhouse gas impact of the building on the environment.
Chimney effect.
The chimney effect.
Thank you. Sorry, you're an engineer? Yeah. That's the problem, I'm an engineer. Engineers ask a lot of questions. Vent stacks are important because I spent my whole life in chemical class, and they're all over the place.
That explains everything.
And I was always curious if there was, other than the chimney effect, if there was a standard, and I appreciate your answer. Thank you very much.
And the thing is, you're balancing all of these safety and energy with the visibility, like we're wanting to be the lowest possible but without it impacting safety and. The supplemental information that we have. So here's a view of, an updated image of the southern view with the vents moving to an area where you don't see it from anywhere around the campus, but also meeting that requirement that I just mentioned. This is the plan of the mechanical space, and this relates to the request going from 15 to 19 in terms of the height for the mechanical space. A section through the mechanical space, which is up here, shows that we're trying to fit within the 19 feet required. And what drives that need for the height is similarly sustainability measure with the air handling units using what's called a heat recovering wheel. So they actually, I might show a visual of that if someone is interested. Oh, by the way, Mark asked me to put kind of examples of what those vents might look like. So here's a vent at MIT and another vent in stainless steel, another building on Boston. So it is this kind of type, simple cylinder. But nothing has that industrial. So within the mechanical space, you'll see here on the right-hand side the two-story air handling unit that I described and with all the pipes that are required to service it. And what drives the height of these units is what this wheel, that is called an entlipty wheel. And basically, what that does is takes heated and cooled air. Instead of pushing it outside the building as an exhaust, it takes that heat and the energy spent already and moves it to the new air that goes back into it. This is a process of taking that energy and putting it back into the building. And that's where the height comes from. Similarly, on the venting, what you see here is fans that are taking the air out through the vents. What you see on the left is air-cooled chillers, which are elements that would be sitting on the roof within the allowable height. But basically, they are. They sit out here behind the screen. And back to the view in the building. From the building, we're screening those behind this feature right here. So the idea is that you also don't see those when they're sitting outside. So that's our presentation of the reasons we're asking for the permits.
If I may, at this point, summarize and conclude. Obviously, in order to be entitled to the relief that we're requesting, we need to meet the statutory requirements. In this case, I think it's been pretty well explained that we're dealing with some unusual topographic conditions that are unique to this property and don't affect all properties in the Limited Commercial District. And it's on account of those topographic conditions that we're here tonight. What we're asking for, we believe, is consistent with the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw in many respects. It's encouraging the most appropriate use of a property that's had a checkered past. It's maintaining to the extent we can and enhancing natural amenities, conserving the value of land in the town of Manchester, promoting sustainable development and encouraging climate resistance. Those are key to our project. And lastly, implementing recommendations of the master plan. And the master plan, as I suspect you all know, more than anything else, encouraged proper development in the Limited Commercial District in order to improve the fiscal condition of the town. There's been some published stories lately about what the town is anticipating from this project. We can't predict. We can say that we're not going to be asking for tax incentive financing. We do intend to pay a fair share for taxes. Until we actually finish the design of the building and get estimates as to what it's going to cost, we really can't tell you precisely what the benefit to the town will be. But there certainly will be a significant fiscal benefit with very little downside. The planning board, as part of its process, will require a fiscal impact study and probably peer review of that fiscal impact study. So a lot, in addition to the limited materials that we're presenting tonight with respect to building height, will be provided to the planning board in order for us to encourage the planning board to grant us the special permit that we require from the planning board as well as site plan review. So with that, the team is here to answer any questions you have. And we look forward to moving this project along.
So I'll see first if there's questions from the board, or I just want to remind both people on the board and people in the audience that what's before us is a variance with respect to the height. So we won't be taking questions that go outside of that with respect to the projects because that will be in the purview of the planning board. Okay. Brian, do you have any questions with respect to the height? We will be asking.
Well, with that limitation, no, I don't. I have none.
Rob? Yeah. No questions at this time, thank you. Done.
No, I think it's a good design.
Okay. With that, is there any member of the public who wishes to be recognized on this application? Is there anybody in the room? Please state your name and address.
Ron Master Giacomo, 9 Mascanamo Street. Just wondering if all the mechanicals have to go on the roof or can they be put on the ground? or can they be put on the ground, like the chiller and what have you? Or do they, is that where they engineering-wise need to be on the roof?
So there are mechanical uh equipment that sits inside the building on the lower level and they need to be there because that's where utilities feed in. But typically, you want to take, put the air handling units up because it wants to get fresh air and uh take it down into the building. So the logical placement of it is uh typically on the top.
And the most efficient energy-wise.
And then a follow-up question?
Yes.
On the higher up building on the one that's straddling the ledge, would there be any lighting at on that side of the building that faces the highway? Wall pack lighting at that height or uh would there be light pollution?
Uh, so there will be uh lights along the road, which we call the loop road. And of course, there'll be light inside the building. But we are uh doing a photometric study that is to meet the town uh bylaws for and meet lead requirements for uh no light pollution. Uh, and we're uh that will be part of our submission for the special permit.
Can I answer your questions? Anybody else in the room? With that, I will go to people on Zoom. If you have a question, please raise your hand on Zoom so you can be called on. I don't see anybody raising their hand. With that, does the board want to discuss the application?
I just have one question.
Sure.
Um, are you guys, I heard you guys mentioned the lead requirements. Are you, are you trying for lead certification on this building?
Yes.
Okay.
What was your question? I couldn't hear it.
Uh, whether they were trying for lead certification for the building? Uh, because I heard them mention that. I just wanted to know if that was kind of what their goals are.
We're tracking lead gold. And uh we're also wanting to certify it for well on the world certificate, which um close to platinum on that, which is very important to be precise.
Thanks for clarifying your goals.
And and I I do think that the one immediate butter who had interest in the project uh did send a letter to you Sarah and others late today.
Oh, okay, I didn't see it.
So you you may not have seen it, but Tim Brady, who owns the property that's developed next door, has been working with cell signaling. And as a matter of fact, he's agreed to provide some easements that are going to enhance the ability to do planting and and have a secondary means of egress. So uh it's a very good relationship. The the other immediate butter, the trustees of reservations, uh, we have talked to. They generally don't like to participate in these things. But as we will explain to the planning board, uh, we've designed a
Heart.
parking lot and access to the trustees' monoliths property uh so that uh they'll have an enhanced ability to bring people in. And so uh we're friendly with our neighbors.
And I'm looking at Mr. Brady's letter now that seems to wholeheartedly support it and talk about it will be an incredibly valuable asset to our town and it's beautiful. Uh, okay. Any concerns from the board regarding that?
I'm going to ask one because I have no idea what cell signaling technology is engaged in. I have a very broad sense, but I don't know. But the question that comes up, particularly when you talk about vent pipes and all, will you be doing anything in there in your building, in your laboratories, that if it got out of the building, it would present a hazard to the people of Manchester and the surrounding areas?
I would generally, no, we're not working with any type of biological reagents that, you know, would pose any significant, you know, any really any harm at all. We're not working with infectious disease agents that could get out and spread disease or.
So there's no level, level four labs in there?
No, 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 we are, we are BL2 level facility.
Thank you.
Uh, I I thought that the the site visit on Saturday was really helpful just to have an understanding of the existing conditions and how your design ties into that. So that was really helpful. Um, and with respect to phase two, I think we touched on this at the meeting. Is that construction phase dependent on the the growth of the company? Or is it the capital markets or a combination of both?
Um, I I would say it would certainly be a combination. Uh, you know, primarily assuming the capital markets are, you know, sufficiently in order, it would primarily depend on the growth of the economy.
Sorry, thank you.
Do you have anything to add?
No way, I think, I think this is a a nice design. I think they've done a good job with the challenging site. So I don't have any questions on the height at this time.
Okay. Rob?
No questions. Nothing, nothing that concerns the height. And and I was clearly told not to ask anything that would do not concern the engineer.
Take them off, yeah. You're not on my time, you can talk to anyone.
So, yeah. So, um, I mean, it's a mixed mixed-use occupancy.
It's always going to go away.
You mentioned earlier that there might be an area that's a high hazardous use group. Is that correct?
Mark, can you talk about it?
Yeah, sure. Uh, so it's a, there's.
Could you just state your name?
Yes, sure. Mark Allen, I'm a principal with HGA in Phoenix, Arizona.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so it's technically a B building occupancy with mixed uh occupancies within it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so that the each uses would be less than 10% of that floor. They're generally to hold, um, you know, not especially large amounts of solvents.
Okay, so it's just pure the solvents or explosives or?
Uh, no explosives, no explosives.
So again, I mean, we're all concerned that, you know, something could escape or if there was to be a fire or an explosion, we ought, it just like to know that.
Right, and those rooms are, those rooms are designed to be contained, so they have
Two-hour fire rating.
two-hour fire ratings and other provisions, yeah.
Good.
And again, they're relatively small um for, especially for a building of this type.
Yeah.
It's all.
So will you any make motion?
Yes.
Okay, that's a long one. Stay awake. I move to close the public hearing and approve the application of Old Quarry LLC for a variance under sections five point five and twelve point three point three of the zoning bylaw and other relief as may be necessary to allow for an eight-foot increase in the height for the building from fifty-five feet to sixty-three feet, a four-foot increase in the height for mechanical appurtenances from fifteen feet to nineteen feet, and an eleven-foot increase in the height of the vent pipes from fifteen feet to twenty-six feet at the site located off Atwater Avenue, Assessors Map number thirty-seven, lot seven and eight in the limited commercial district, filed with the town clerk on October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Based on a finding, the building will be primarily used for laboratory purposes and health, safety, environmental, and sustainability require a design with a higher, with the higher requested heights. A single structure will be built in two phases. And there is a seventy-eight foot drop in the elevation where the structure is to be built since the site was previously disturbed disturbed by a granite quarry which operated on the site. And the desire to protect the undisturbed portion of the property owing to the circumstances relating to the topography of this land or structures, especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located, a literal literal enforcement of the provisions of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the applicant. And the desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially deridating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. Based on the condition, the project is constructed substantially in accordance with the location and height depicted on the following documents. These are the documents I was gonna um propose to include. Plans prepared by Hancock Associates, the ZBA exhibit plan of land dated October sixteenth, twenty-three, the working plan of land dated September twenty-seventh, twenty-three, the ZBA grading exhibit plan dated October eleventh, twenty-three, and the average existing grade database dated October eleventh, twenty-four. And then also depictions prepared by HGA dated October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, consisting of thirteen pages, including drone views, proposed massing, site section, and average pre-construction grade. And then for November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, to the extent it differs from the one from um the October date. And then finally, this height variance is granted for the construction of a parking garage, lavatory, and office space in one multi-level structure to be built in two phases. The rights granted under this variance shall lapse on the first anniversary of the date stamped by the town clerk on the first page of the decision, the date on which it is granted, plus time required to pursue or await an appeal of this decision unless the applicant has applied for a building permit or the site work for this proposed project that's commenced.
Uh, we uh, the statute doesn't require that action on the variance necessitate the issuance of a building permit or even construction activity. However, uh, we need to do things in reliance on the relief you grant tonight, which we intend to do, going to the planning board, uh, other work. But I do anticipate that we'll be doing site work within a year of the grant. So I think that your language is sufficient.
And and it's my understanding that you also have the right to come back to us and request a six-month extension if you do it before that initial year is up.
That's correct.
I wanted to give you time for the granting of the um planning board special permit.
As long as the planning board acts quickly, we'll be fine.
You think we'll act quickly?
Oh, boy. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Jim seconds it. I can write it. Who would like to review it?
I'll review it.
Jim will review it, okay. And we'll try to be timely on.
Can you vote on it?
Oh, sorry.
I'm just asking.
Yes. Any more discussion? Take a vote.
My point.
Jim.
Yes.
Rob.
Approved.
Kathy.
Approved.
John.
Yes.
Sarah approves. Okay.
Thank you very much and thank everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought it was just something minor.
Yeah, sorry. Okay.
I would say.
You're saying keep some. Neighbor dog. Uh, no, it's um. Yeah, I mean, it's only, I mean. So, I mean, providing a steward probably. And with my proper language, we should be.
Let's just kind of move through the.
No, no, you didn't, you didn't somebody know, no, no, we do, you were very. No. Find that guy. Yeah. Uh, we just. And uh, we are. Please, yeah, nothing good, yeah, progress.
You ready to move on?
Progress, okay.
You know, sufficient. It's relevant. Generators. Yeah, it's been a entire time, actually.
No, we're only talking about the planning board. Seem to uh, seem to have a lot of issues.
That aren't really consequences.
I know.
Okay.
I'm speaking as a citizen, not a member of the town.
We're now going to move on to the application for Three Herald Street.
Okay.
Okay. Um, I will open the public hearing for the application of Heatheram James Campbell for a special permit under sections five point four, seven point two, and twelve point five in the zoning bylaw and the other relief as may be necessary to add a second floor addition over the garage and over the single-story portion in the front right, a three-foot by fourteen-foot front addition and a four-foot by fourteen-foot front entry porch on a non-conforming residential structure on a non-conforming lot at Three Herald Street, Assessors Map number thirty-nine, lot number two in District A, filed with the town clerk on September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. Now, is somebody here to present the application? Please state your name.
I'm James Campbell.
Okay.
This is my first time here, so I apologize if I don't know the protocols.
No problem.
You don't have a slick presentation?
Well, I do not have, uh, really, we're not quite as comfortable. I'm sure in the year.
Where's your mass of men?
That's my army right there. If there's any real questions, you can. So a- as you mentioned, we're currently in a about a twenty-four hundred plus square foot single-family home um where parts of it are non-conforming. So um there's currently a a walkway um that goes across the front of the house with an off-center doorway um to the right of the house as you're facing the um the structure. And there was a trowel over that um which we removed. That was um kind of already existing and too close to the um the street runage. I think by a, by a. And then, so what we are proposing is just, we want to re-center the door on the house, uh, remove that walkway, um, and then bring out a covered porch that would um that would cover the walkway and then with some, you know, puddings or foundation under that and then uh a walkway up to the house. So um we'd remove a lot of the current um pavers that are there. So it should improve the um inverters area um within the front of the house. That's the one item. And then due to the way the lot lines um on the left side of the house as you're facing the house, going a little bit of an angle, the back corner of the existing garage is about four feet within the setback. And so that's really the the other issue we're looking for so that we can um uh put the addition over over the garage to have some um much-needed space for storage and. Do you mind?
Did you talk to your neighbors?
We did. So none of the eight neighbors um had any issues. The uh John and Mary Jo, who are on the Five Herald Street, they did bring up a concern about the windows and where their house is located. And we're worried about the windows might be a little close. So we had proposed a few options to them. We had already planned our abilities, which we think will grow up and provide some coverage on that side anyway. We offered to put in a tree to provide some some additional um privacy. And, you know, also if, you know, if neither of those were were satisfactory, we offered to um potentially go from the double-hung windows that are on the side to something that's higher and more decorative, just so we can take it out of line of sight, but also still get some light in on that side of the house. Because right now, there's no windows over there. So that is the one lone concern I have to have them articulate if known at all to watch and what they're, if they have any concerns with any of those two options.
These are the windows above the garage?
Yes, on the, on the side.
It's on the far end of the garage, there's two double-hung windows.
So that's the left side elevation?
Yes.
Okay.
Otherwise, our neighbors have verbalized with us that there's a problem with this project.
And I know that for the board, we've. And I know that for the board, we've received several versions of the plans, and it's the October 19th that we're filing.
Do you want to move downstairs?
Can I go down stairs?
Yeah, they have to, they do. There should be, there's a set that's stamped, received by the town clerk, October 19th.
September 27th.
And then there should be some from October.
There's a minor statement.
I see that.
Yeah.
September.
Here it is.
Oh.
The only, the only change between the two is potentially increasing the height of the main, the main house, because it's sun.
Right. I got it.
It's fairly low pitch country, so there's no facing attitude. It's potentially a decrease of the height.
Um, so, hmm.
But no, no changes to the condition.
Otherwise, the no changes, that is solely the, um, just.
It's just like slightly different?
You can't really tell it from the plans. You don't see, but, so you had originally requested, said that would be a 23-foot footwell, right? What are you saying it's going to be now?
Uh, it's about 25 and a half.
Okay.
Rob, Catherine, you need this?
He does.
No, I don't.
Okay, let's look at mine.
I have my own.
Oh, great. Yes, all right, I hear you. Thanks. Racking up the favors.
These are the only changes?
I think there's just more clarification change.
Rob, do you have any questions?
No questions. It's a good design.
So it looks like that, that front corner of the garage is the part that's going into the side setback and the front setback, right?
The, the front is, um, within the front zone, well, it's a little over 20 feet. Uh, this is that rear corner, that's the, that's the, uh.
That's 15.76120.
Yeah.
This one.
That's the side.
I saw that.
The rear. The setback is 100.
But then.
The rear setback's okay.
Fine.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, yeah. Sorry, the front corner to the street. Yes, I was thinking of the neighbors.
Yeah, so that, that front corner to the street, and sorry, that, that rear corner to the side, yes.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, and that's with the, the existing footprint, so it's been there.
Yeah, well, we're not changing any of the, of the garage. We're going directly over what's already existing.
Yeah.
The only place that we're extending the footprint is, um, where the new front door will be. We'll be extending that out, um, three feet to build out like a little entryway. And then there will be another about three and a half feet of a covered porch.
Sure, yeah.
So, and that would put us about, uh, 20, like 28 feet, a little over 28 feet from the street.
And what is it now?
Uh, well, tech, we took down that trellis that was up, and that was 21 feet to the street. There was a very large.
Okay.
Trellis that was removed, and I don't know if it was ever permitted or not to be on this review, so that we totally removed. So what we're actually putting in is gonna be, uh, it's gonna be smaller.
Further.
And set back a little bit further, yeah.
Yeah, but it doesn't enhance the non-conformity.
Right.
So, your front setback, you're still gonna be within the requirements in the front setback?
No.
No?
They, the front setback.
I'm just looking at this existing.
The front setback is 30 feet.
Yep, and it says 27 and 27 on this cover sheet that I have.
Yeah.
So there's.
Right, so they missed it by three feet.
Right. They're not, they're not making it worse.
The plans are saying, the plans are saying 28.
On the front entryway, yeah.
Yeah.
28.3.
In the front, uh, portion of the house that's currently there, so.
There is a walk, a large, like, walkway, and then there was a trellis over that that came out. So we're trying to go along the, the small bump out on the, to the entryway, and then the, the, the still covering.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna extend as far as that trellis did.
Or the front of that existing, uh, entryway that we already have, which is 28, a little over 28.
Though it's not gonna be, uh, the board, the board's gonna make it.
A little bit higher.
I have nothing further. This is straightforward.
You okay with that? Yeah. Jim?
I'm okay.
Do you want to? Anybody in the room that wants to ask a question? Did you have anything, Brian?
Nothing related to this, no. I got plenty of things, but not really this.
Um, is there, is there anyone on Zoom who would like to be heard on this application? If so, please raise your hand in Zoom, and I'll call on you. I don't see anybody. So are you ready to make, make a motion?
I'm excited for you to make a motion.
You're ready.
You're on fire tonight, huh?
Was that burning, John?
I move to close the public hearing and approve the application of Heatheram James Campbell for a special permit under sections 5.4, 7.2, and 12.5 of the zoning bylaw, and other relief is may be necessary to add a second story over the existing attached garage and the single-story portion in the front right, a single-story three-foot-by-14-foot front addition, and four-foot-by-14-foot front entry porch on the existing non-conforming residential structure on a non-conforming lot at 3 Harold Street, Assessors' Map number 39, Lot Number 2 in District A, filed with the town clerk on September 27th, 2023. Based on a finding that the proposed project to add a second story over the existing attached garage, add a three-foot-by-14-foot front entry and four-by-14-foot front porch to an existing non-conforming residential structure which encroaches into the front setback and left-side setback on a non-conforming lot is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw, will not be more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood in which it is located than the existing non-conforming structure, and the requirements and conditions of section 12.5.2 of the zoning bylaw for the grant of a special permit have been met based on the following conditions. The house and additions are constructed as reflected on the plan of land prepared by Meramec Engineering Services dated June 26th, 19, uh, 2023. The house renovations and additions are constructed substantially in accordance with the following plans prepared by JMA Architects and Planners dated October 17th, 2023, submitted to the town clerk on October 19th, 2023. A1, existing and proposed first-floor plan, A2, existing and proposed second-floor plan, A3, existing and proposed front elevation, A4, existing and proposed rear elevation, A5, existing and proposed side elevations, A6, attic floor plan and building sections. And do you want me to add something about discussions with the neighbor? No? Okay. Um, do I have a second?
Okay.
Catherine, seconds. Any discussion? Ready to vote? Jim?
Yes, I approve.
Rob?
Approve.
Catherine?
Approve.
John?
Approve.
And Sarah approves. Who would like to write this?
I can write it.
John will write it. Who would like to approve it? I can review.
Can I get a copy of the elevations that were stamped in October?
Yes. Yeah.
I'll just take it.
Okay.
Oh, by the way, she got from me.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, now he owes you the favor.
I'm just collecting all the right.
So, you're all set.
Thank you.
We, we have 90 days to write the decision.
Okay.
Once the decision is filed, the town clerk has a 20-day appeal period. The building inspector will issue a building permit and allow you to proceed at your own risk prior to the expiration of that 20-day. And Gail Hunter will send you a copy of the decision when it's filed.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And hopefully, it will be shorter than 90 days.
Yeah, I will.
Thank you so much, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A note for the kid yet? What?
It's the same.
About you, right? I used to live on my street. Okay. We're now moving to the application for 168 School Street.
Pine Street.
Pine Street. Thank you.
And Jim, you've just proved your.
Hey, I'm sorry.
I did, absolutely. I'm paying attention.
I think that's upside down.
That's okay, it's crooked too. My head is bigger than that.
Is it, no?
Pine Street is here.
Oh, I see. Okay, just the words are, yeah, I got it.
It's the way it is up there. Can everyone see this, or should I move it to a different spot?
Good.
Okay. I will open the public hearing for the application of David Anderson for a special permit under sections 4, 5.4, 7.2, and 12.5 of the zoning bylaw, and other relief is may be necessary to raise the existing single-family non-conforming structure and construct a new modular non-conforming single-family residence, attach, attach it to the existing garage and set it back further on the lot to decrease the encroachment into the front and side setbacks and eliminate the encroachment into the Town of Manchester Water Works easement on a non-conforming lot at 168 Pine Street, Assessors' Map number 32, Lot Number 54 in District A, filed with the town clerk on October 16th, 2023.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, I'm Deborah Ellison, Ellison Law Office, 63 Middle Street, Gloucester. The applicant is David Dusset, and he's here tonight. And Cynthia Havery is also here. She resides property. The engineer is Daniel Ottenkhyber of Mill River Engineer Consulting, excuse me. He is here on Zoom because he had a couple of other meetings. And the builder, Alman Napparo, is here. I do have, at the, before the site visit, there was a request that there be, um, a height sketch, and that was sent out electronically. I don't know if everyone has a copy, but I have hard copies if anyone wants to see them.
Yeah, one.
Sure.
I have a, I printed a hard copy.
Thank you.
Is that what I'm? Yeah. Mine just printed out on you.
Right here. Oh.
Oh, mine.
I, I got that. It's on my computer, yeah.
So the applicant is requesting the special permit under Manchester zoning bylaw, section 7.2, for the alteration, reconstruction, and expansion of a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot. There's no other relief that's requested or required. They are seeking to demolish an existing 900-square-foot single-family home and replace it with a 14-40-square-foot single-family home that will be attached to the existing garage on the property. The car storage tent that is currently on the property will be removed. The two existing sheds will remain. As I said, it's a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot. The new house will be placed farther away from the street and more in the middle of the lot. I've added some demarcation on the site plan to help you look at this. And this is the front setback. And the new house is entirely outside of the setback. There is still an existing encroachment, which is the garage. So the garage is existing, and it encroaches, and that will remain. There is no encroachment by the new house. The house also currently is in the middle of an easement that is owned by the town for water purposes. And so the new house will be moved entirely outside of that easement, which is a benefit to both the owner of the property as well as the town to have that easement free and clear of the house. They also have an impediment of wetlands in the backyard, so there are very limited space for them to put the house, and they've tried to move it to the middle and make it compliant outside of the wetlands and also outside of the, um, front setback. The property is in the single-residence District A. It requires 22,500 square feet. This lot has 17,683 square feet. The front setback is currently six feet, and it will be increased to 23 feet, which is the existing garage. The right side yard setback is currently seven feet, and that will be increased to 14 feet. Lot coverage will be increased, but it will still be compliant at 29%. The rear and the left side yard setbacks are currently compliant and will remain compliant. The proposed height, um, is calculated to be 17 feet 11 inches. It's going to be a single-story home, so it's well under the height, um, requirements. The Dave and Cindy have spoken to their neighbors. They've spoken to people who essentially surround the property, 165 Pine Street, 161 Pine Street, 166, 23 Rockwood Heights, which is behind it, and then the Town of Manchester also abuts it. They are not aware of any opposition to the project. The special permit to alter, expand, and reconstruct a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot should be granted because the new house is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing non-conforming home. The existing non-conformities are being improved. They are relocating the home outside of the town easement, as I said, which is beneficial to both the town and the owner. And a significant portion of the wetlands restricts where the home can be placed. It also complies with the conditions under 12.5.2, and I'll go through those briefly. With regard to the adequacy of the site in terms of size, the site's undersized, but it is close to the required 22,500 square feet. It complies with the lot coverage requirements, and it already contains a single-family home, and that use will remain. With regard to the suitability for the proposed use, again, the site is already used for a single-family home. The existing utilities will be approved. There is current, the house is currently served by a cesspool, and that will be abandoned, and they will be connecting to the town sewer. There's existing town water, there's adequate access, and it's suitable to contain the proposed new home. The siding will be improved by moving it to the middle of the lot. With regard to traffic flow and safety, that will be improved by moving the house farther away from the street. And only a small portion of the existing garage will encroach into the front yard setback. The impact on the neighborhood as far as visual character and district views, the impact of the neighborhood will be improved by this, um, much newer home than what is there now. The closest home that is abiding it is to the right, 166 Pine Street, and it will be located farther away from that home. They don't anticipate that there'll be any impacts to district reviews, and as I said, the new updated home will be a benefit to the neighborhood. The adequacy of sewage disposal, source of water and drainage, the cesspool obviously is not ideal, and so this will be a much, much improvement over that. And the drainage will also be served better by being connected to the town sewer. With regard to other utilities, um, they are all adequate and will be improved. The impact on public and private water supplies, wildlife, and other natural resources, it's located entirely out of the wetlands. They do need to go before conservation. They were waiting until they had a approved footprint before they did that. And again, they'll upgrade the existing cesspool. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. And as I said, the builder and the engineer are also available to answer questions.
Can you just clarify for us the size? It's my understanding it's a modular home.
It is a modular home.
And there's two sections 14 feet wide and a draw.
From the drawing, you're providing the house.
Is it the 48 one?
Whole, you're blanking with your eyes. I don't know if glasses work.
And this, the reason I'm asking is because.
48 is what's on the drawing.
The, the drawing just says 48. She referenced 1,440 square foot feet, and this says 1,668. Is that difference? The sunroom or the deck?
It is 48 forward deck. Not sure if that was included or not. I think if we're. I think if we're including that, keeping the natural rain from hitting the natural ground, I think that would number would be more consistent. But the actual size of the house is 48.
Okay.
Blocks are 14 feet wide, and the sunroom is 10 by 12.
Okay. And the porch is?
Approximately 6.
6 by 32?
It's 36. 36.
6 by 32?
So, it's way, um, complete, but this part of the lot is.
Yeah, that's, that's a 6? It's either 5 or a 6.
I don't have my glasses on.
I think it's a 6.
It shouldn't be 6.
Okay. 6 by 40, 6 by 36.
6 by 36.
For the farmer's porch.
The reason I'm asking, normally we have plans, and because we don't have plans, I want to put the outside limits of the size we're proving in the decision. Any questions in the board?
Do we have a picture of the actual house, going to look like when it's finished?
We, we don't have an actual picture of the house. We were concerned about actually coming to this board to see if it would be approved. We have these plans, we've sketched out for you. There's a significant cost to the applicants, and we really were trying to hold off and spending money on plans. Additionally, those plans would have to go out to Indiana for stamping.
Right.
So, may I just? With regard to the prefabs, the way it works is they give you, they do have a set of plans, but they showed a second story. So, the house isn't going to look like that. They determined as they were going through the design process that they couldn't afford to have the second story. So, we don't, in order to get plans that would show just a single story, it was another $3,500. And then, to get stamped plans, it's $7,000, which they get back if they go ahead. But obviously, not knowing if they're going to get approvals, they were reluctant to spend that extra money.
So, when they go to apply for the permit, that's when it'll produce a plan?
Yeah. They'll have, they'll have to have more detailed plans than we have here for the zoning board.
My only other question is, is it going to be changed to the driveway?
I believe.
The driveway will stay the same.
It's going to stay.
That'll be access into both bays and the garage.
Catherine, any questions?
I did, I'm sorry, you said that the car coverage that is being removed and the sheds that are remaining, do I have that right?
Yes, that is correct.
And are you guaranteed a town sewer connection? Like, do you have to, what's the cost?
There is a connection, there is a connection there.
Stopped off on the property line. It's already ran into the pump station.
Okay, so there's no additional, like, that's a guaranteed thing that will happen?
Probably owner has to pay for it.
You can't have it anymore.
Okay, okay.
He does work for DPDW.
He'll do it, he'll look.
We just remember all the talk about the sewer capacity and the whether people could apply to get in and all of that stuff that we talked about before, yeah, right? So, I just thought I'd check.
I think it's because they're replacing a cesspool, which we want to get.
One would imagine, yeah.
But they allow me to connection.
I lost that in my basement.
You don't? Whatever's going to be there, we don't, we don't need it there.
Um, John?
I have nothing.
Questions?
What do you mean?
No questions. You just rattle them, Jim. Is there any member of the public on Zoom who would like to be heard on this application? If so, raise your hand in Zoom. I don't see anything. You ready for me to make a motion?
Oh, sure.
I move to close the public hearing and approve the application of David Anderson for a special permit under sections 5.4, 7.2, and 12.5 of the zoning bylaw, and other relief as may be necessary to raise the existing single-family non-conforming structure and construct a new modular non-conforming single-family residence, attach it to the existing garage, and set it back further on the lot to decrease the encroachment into the front and side setbacks and eliminate the encroachment into the town of Manchester Waterworks easement on a non-conforming lot at 168 Pine Street, assessor's map number 32, lot number 54 in District A, filed with the town clerk on October 16, 2023, based on a finding that the proposed project to raise the non-conforming existing single-family structure and construct a new one-story non-conforming single-family residence, attach it to the existing garage and set further back on the lot to decrease the encroachment into the front setback and side setback and eliminate the encroachment into the town of Manchester Waterworks easement on a non-conforming lot is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw, will not be more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood in which it is located than the existing non-conforming structure, and the requirements and conditions under section 12.5.2 of the zoning bylaw for the grant of a special permit have been met based on the following conditions. The new single-family residence shall be located as reflected on the site plan prepared by Mill River Consulting dated October 12, 2023. The existing car tent shall be removed. The new one-story single-family residence will consist of two modular units, each 14 by 48, and a 10 by 20-foot sunroom and a 6-foot by 36-foot farmer's porch. The structure shall not exceed a height of 20 feet and will be constructed substantially in accordance with the hand-drawn elevation attached here to, which is the same.
Madam Chair.
Your correction to the?
One minor correction. I believe you said 10 by, uh, 20?
Yeah.
10 by 12.
10 by 12.
Thank you.
She's loved to build bigger. But I think.
Now you can. Congratulations.
Thank you for that correction. Do I have a second? John seconds. Any discussion? Ready to vote? Jim?
Yes.
Rob?
True.
Catherine? John?
Yes.
Sarah votes yes.
One, two, three, four, five. Were you the first alternate or the second? I think I'm the first.
Right, but we chose that because he was recusing himself from the most application to have you do this tonight.
Right. He can vote for this one. I wasn't paying attention.
Okay. Nothing is there, okay.
Thank you very much.
I thought it was, I thought it was.
Who would like to write it?
We should, we should talk about this next.
I'll write it.
We should talk about this next.
I won't, I'm standing, so I can't.
That's okay.
I'll get my.
I can vote, I'm, yes, yeah.
So, as you know, we have 90 days to write it, and then there's a 20-day appeal period. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I know. Yes, I think actually Jim is the second alternate, isn't he?
Yeah.
Oops.
He insisted on it.
I don't blame him. My goal is to get thrown off the support. How am I doing?
You did a good job tonight. Shut up.
All right.
Have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Same to you.
We now move to administrative matters to review and approve minutes. I believe we received September minutes. I haven't had a chance to review them yet. Does anybody else?
Catherine, have we?
I did, I reviewed this.
Okay.
But if no one else has, my opinion really doesn't matter.
I mean, I have two.
You've reviewed them, okay.
I looked at them, I'm searching.
Do we want to approve them?
I mean, I think they're fine.
Okay.
I trust the lawyer. Says they.
Catherine has blessed us. The grammar is correct, spelling is correct, commas is evident.
I think there may have been a misplaced question mark, but I think that wasn't the other.
They do go into detail about how you talked about that stove.
I know, it's so unnecessary. That's fine. It's also not, it doesn't matter, that's fine. Um, they're fine.
So, you want to make a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve minutes from September 26, 2023. Actually, is this meeting that you weren't at?
No, I was at, I was at the stove meeting.
Okay, all right, never mind. Motion to approve minutes of September 26, 2023 without correction.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Rob seconds. All in favor?
All right.
All right.
Okay.
The October minutes we're going to wait on?
Sure.
Did you review those?
I mean, I did.
Okay. Did anybody else review them?
Yeah, but I wasn't there, which was.
Okay.
Prompted my correction.
And then I'm wondering who was there, because it says that he voted on some stuff, and obviously, he wasn't one of the voting members. So, I just, I think we need to correct him.
Okay.
For that, whoever.
So, October is a question about who the attendees were?
Yeah.
Okay.
How many applications?
Dana Shaw, which three Anthony have. It was a couple-story addition, long history addition. And then Calvin Copertes, L. G.
Beaver Dam.
Beaver Dam. Road. Glofski again.
Brady.
Oh, yeah, that was the name.
Yeah, the trailers.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
We were very much concerned with the fire suppression.
Very concerned. And somehow, all that he did didn't make it into the minutes, so my stove question did.
Jim, you were not at the.
I was not there on October. If that, could you stop?
Not Jim and not John.
But that stove.
It is really cool.
That's really cool.
Okay, got it.
I must have, I don't remember that part of the conversation. I must have dazed.
I just want to make sure the fire track ended up there. It's like, oh, we got a system with 24,000 gallon.
Status, status of decisions.
I owe one.
Gail, so what, what do you owe?
I owe, I don't know, something from September.
23 Old Neck Road.
Yep, 23 Old Neck Road.
The stove.
The stove.
The stove.
The stove house.
The stove.
And I owe one Beaver Dam Road.
And Sean owes three Anthony Lane.
Okay.
That's his first decision.
Not his second.
Oh, his second, okay.
That's, I'm sorry, that's Sean Zan's second decision? Hasn't he been here for like four years?
Been here.
No.
Maybe a year.
Hasn't been here for four years, but he's been here, yeah.
Well, as an alternate.
Yeah, he was a little slow to, on the uptake to agree to write decisions.
Got it. Well, I'll get a hand and then volunteer.
We need to poke him. Now, you need to sit next to him and poke him, so he jumps and raises his hand next time.
Well, he was poked today, that's why he's not here.
Yeah, he had surgery today, as well as not here.
I hope he's feeling better.
So, is there anything else we need to discuss? I did go on the site visit for the HAC.
How was it?
It was interesting.
A bunch of people asked me about it.
It was, um.
Was there anything showing?
So, a lot, tons of people were there.
Yeah, I believe they were protesters, right?
Yeah, but only a small group went on the actual site visit.
Yeah.
But we looked at the actual, it was much more complete than the site visit we had.
Right, or, yeah.
And everything was marked. All the corners of the buildings were marked. We walked, we looked to where the drive was, and.
We weren't walking on ice.
They pointed, we weren't walking on ice, and they pointed out the saltwater fishery.
Yep.
The Salt Mill Creek. And she paid attention.
The HAC administration.
That, yeah, apparently, she's the only one that sits in for the hearing. And then, she writes the decision, and then at the end, the rest of the HAC signs off on it.
When's that due?
Well, the evidentiary hearing is starting, it's supposed to start on March 4, 2024, and it will be in Manchester if they can get a proper location.
Community center.
Community center.
And then it will be remote. They expect the last two or three weeks, and they expect the decision to come in, you know, late in 2025.
In 25?
Yeah, 2025, yeah. That's what they expect, but, you know, you never know.
It's kind of like writing a ZBA decision, just sit on it for a year.
But the, the only thing that was disheartening is when we were looking, she didn't go all the way up, because she has bad knees. But we were looking up at the lower level of the ledge, not the highest level, and we're talking about, you know, how much was coming off and the fact that no people could get down. Her reaction, well, it's, anything can be engineered.
Think about the children trying to.
Scale the ledge.
Scale this driveway.
But she was very, she was very nice.
I was getting text messages that morning from all sorts of people, like, there's like, when can I go, can I go, what's happening, da, 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 da. I was like, I, if you're not on the list, I don't think you can go, but I think you can go stand nearby.
Right, yeah.
For the public road, if you want to.
They lined, they lined the boardwalk as we walked through.
I figured.
Yeah.
I was like, there's public property.
It's like signs and stuff?
Yeah.
It was just like a.
But it wasn't, wasn't any stop SLB signs, no.
Nobody threw.
Oh, they were very courteous.
Yes.
Clap slowly as you walk by?
No, they didn't, no, they were.
Kind of like from.
They had put up some conservation-type signs at various places, and, you know, but no, it was all conservation.
Nobody was rude.
No, no.
I've got two questions.
She was a little taken aback by all the people, though. It's the most she's ever had on a site visit.
Oh, good thing you answered this.
Really? Well, that's good. This was the judge, right?
Yeah.
I, an observation.
Yeah.
That, for some reason, maybe just because I have a hearing problem, but when we ask questions of our witnesses, sometimes it's hard to hear the question. I couldn't, I couldn't hear what you said. I couldn't hear what Catherine said. I turn my hearing, and he's up as loud as they go. I hear John all the time, and Brian, of course, you, you can never not hear him. But I would think that we, it would be a good idea to, for the chair, to either state the question that's being asked or make sure everybody understood the question. Tonight, it didn't matter. I assume that when I speak, people hear me, but I don't know that. But I usually, you know, I'm not, so that's a suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
Well, you know, I can try and project more as well. And also, like, don't hesitate to say, like, I didn't quite hear what you said. I won't be offended, I'm happy to repeat.
Well, and I think.
You can hear probably someone else.
Well, I think if it's hard to hear in the room, it makes it difficult to hear on the recording, which makes it difficult for Gail to do the minutes.
Absolutely. So, I'm happy to repeat.
So, that's, it's a very, thank you, that's a very valid. So that's, it's a very, thank you, that's a very valid.
It's, it's just, you know, I'm not being nitpicking, I am being nitpicking, but there was.
No, that's.
No, no, that's fine.
My other question is, what are these green signs that are popping up now? I saw half a dozen of them driving around today. That's all, that's all something, right? Does that have to do with the M B T A thing?
I believe it's the M B T A task force.
They're all over the place now.
Are they colored green?
Green.
Yeah, they're green and it says forty, forty A on it, I think, is what it says.
Yeah, and it says save, his, historic, it's.
What is, what is the one about K P N, Bay?
Don't Boston my K P N.
Yeah, what is that?
Oh, yeah, I've seen that one a lot too.
Don't Boston my K P N.
That's the, that's the M B T A zoning, I think, high density.
And then, there's a, don't rezone my home. I'm gonna put one up that says, please rezone my home.
I thought it was interesting today and the globe, they had a fairly good discussion about Brookline.
Oh, it was incredible.
It was interesting.
There was also, I was on Jim and Marjorie's show, I spoke on there a couple of weeks ago. I, I wasn't a guest, I was, I spent a fair amount of time talking to them because they kept asking me questions. But, um, the town, our town's gonna have to figure out how to get by some of this stuff because, um, the biggest impediment, you know, we're all saying we need more housing. Housing is a crisis, you hear about it almost always. But, um, that's the easy one to fix and I think the forty, this, this one, the M B T A one, I read through the handout that we got at town meeting. It's well done, whoever put that together, planning board put that together?
No, the, uh, M B T A task force, it was a group effort.
Yeah, and, um, I was talking to Bill Cross yesterday too and he, he indicated.
It was, it was good.
He thought it was very good.
But, you know, this. Um, you know, I haven't been here all my life, but, um, if we don't figure out how to solve some of these problems locally, we're gonna be between a rock and a hard place. I won't because I'll be dead. But seriously, going down the road, if we don't figure out how to get more people to live here and pay taxes here, um, we built that immense school and I think the enrollment actually is a little lower than it was when it was built.
We lost eighty-two students from Manchester since twenty twenty.
Yeah, and that's a serious problem.
Young families can't afford to move in here.
So, anyway, I'm sorry, I don't mean to pontificate, but it really bothers me.
No, I, I think that the task force is working hard to come up with some possible districts and then they have to go into the compliance model to see what's kicked out of, is not counting. So for instance, if you were to say that your minimum lot size was gonna be six thousand like it is in general district, if that's the minimum, then if you have one house or two houses on lots less than six thousand, it doesn't count in your density. So you have to be able to look at it and say, okay, what do we have to do to count it in the den? It doesn't look at existing, it just looks at what you could build
Yeah.
under the zoning. So it's, it's a completely different approach that just makes it much more difficult to figure out how to comply.
But we'll do it.
Yeah.
Sort of related question, sort of related, but related to getting things to count. Are those powderhouse properties on the affordable rules yet?
No.
To happen, no?
Yeah.
Why? Because people need to leave, only have to do a lot.
No.
They haven't submitted their paperwork.
The owner hasn't submitted the paperwork.
And that's the owner, is that, was it suspended?
The North Shore C D C?
Yes.
They're delayed.
They're delayed, is my understanding.
Have they indicated why?
Why?
No, not a high enough priority.
That is unfortunate.
Yes.
Certainly is.
Yeah. I mean, that's the where submitted something to the state over a year ago.
Yeah, so that's still not affordable.
They came back looking for additional information. Yeah, so it's not, they're not on there yet.
That's a really unfortunate, yeah, a lot of work and a lot of people were trying to make that happen.
Yeah. And I think they're trying to.
Make the last step happen and get on it.
Yeah, I think there are a number of people working on it.
That's true. Wow.
With varying degrees of success. Anything else?
I have a question.
Yes.
When is your next meeting?
We.
I'm still learning.
Third Wednesday in December. Let me look it up.
Will you be in the always meeting room?
I'm supposed to. Twelve twenty, Sarah.
Thank you, Gail, December twentieth.
December twentieth, thank you very much.
Do we have anything?
Yes. We have this, this. This Falzone from Har, Harbor Street, which is to convert a garage into a residence on a three thousand nine hundred square foot lot. There is a, a variance for a shed at sixteen Jersey Lane that is built or partially built and a neighbor complained because it's in the front setback.
Oops.
And what's the other one, Gail?
There are two others.
Oh, good lord.
Well, they're not, they're, um, they're not popping up into my mind at the moment, I'm sorry.
There's a swimming pool, isn't there?
Yeah, it's the swimming pool on Bridge Street, is it eighty-nine Bridge Street?
Yeah, eighty-nine Bridge Street, a swimming pool.
The, the one with the horse paddock that's right on Bridge Street and then you go to bed, so that's a swimming pool. And then there's one other that's a little iffy, isn't it?
Whatever, so there's four.
There are four.
Wait, I can find it.
Do we have site visits on the sixteenth of December, which is a Saturday?
Yes. Is that a problem for people?
Well, no, it is for some.
Why?
Basketball.
Basketball, dance. It, so we have eighty-nine Bridge and sixteen Jersey Lane.